A meeting come to order if we would please stand for invocation and ask Mayor Proteum Augurin if he believes in our invocation.
Bow our heads. Our heavenly Father, we've come here tonight to do about the business of this community. Help it to be the community that it ought to be. Guide and direct people that are in positions that can help this community to move along. You are our help in days of old, you're our hope in days to come. As for your guidance, be with members of the armed services that are protecting this country all over the world wherever they may be in harm's way. Protect them, bring them home to their loved ones. We ask their blessing, his nation, his state, his county, his community. These things we ask in thy name, amen.
Please remain standing and face the flag as we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Have you seen it? Before we get into the approval of the agenda, I do want to mention that we had one of our good town employees, Mr. Luther Peden, lost his son, Mr. Hayden Peden. Terrific accident about a week ago. We've had quite a few young people lost their lives in our community. I think we'd be amiss if we didn't recognize this, such a tragedy in which it is. I talked to Luther today and told him that we were, had him in our prayers and will continue to do that and I'd ask you to do the same thing, okay? Looking at the agenda for the night, are there any approval or corrections, excuse me, corrections or additions to the minutes? Agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I could mention several things. Under number four, under presentations and reports, that they are not ready tonight and that that will be postponed to a subsequent meeting. The representatives from DOT. Under the public hearings, number two has been withdrawn for tonight and will be reconsidered at a subsequent meeting, more than likely the next meeting. On page, under new business, the award of rolling stock bids, I want to just mention, although we would like to have for tracking purposes, a separate motion on each of those items, A, B, and C, you could do them with one motion, but for tracking purposes in the minutes, if you would do them as listed A, B, and C. And I would remind you, just as noted, all these items are in the approved budget, all of them came in under budget and the financing has already been addressed, just for your information. And I believe those are the only, well, let me go back, I'm sorry, another item, go back to page one, I apologize. Page, under the appointments to the Farmers Market Committee, Tim Johnson is going to cover that, but we have, in addition to the individuals that were listed in with the agenda packet, we've had some additional names that we would put forward to fill specific spots on the Farmers Market Advisory Committee. Two of them are, were, one was recommended by the Farm Bureau Board of Directors and another slot was, is proposed to be created for the Farm Bureau Board of Directors. But when Tim gets up, he'll explain that to you and I would also note that Mark Lane is here, he's the chairman of the advisory committee. We'll explain that further when we get up. Those are the only changes I'm aware of.
Council have any additions? Changes and additions? I would like to add to the end of our agenda, would like to go into a session to discuss economic development at the end of our meeting. We have a motion on these approvals. Second. Motion is second, those in favor, aye. Those opposed? Agenda is set as discussed. Mr. Manager, I think the first one under presentation reports are kudos to our employees.
Correct, Mr. Mayor, we have other items involving you, but the first one I'd like to turn over to Chief Scott. We have at least one employee in the police department that is worthy of particular recognition and I'll defer to him.
Chief, come on up if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Williams Council. Our first award tonight for the police department is Officer of the Year Award. Smithfield Police Department previously had not done a lot of recognition for Officer of the Year. This year, early on, we decided that we were going to undertake that challenge, identify one particular officer in Smithfield Police Department as Officer of the Year. This officer was voted on by every member of the police department. His ability to be Officer of the Year and his accomplishments that he has done throughout the calendar year 2000. From there, the recommendation went to a special board of our lieutenants in the police department. Who approved that recommendation from all the staff in the police department. This year's Smithfield Police Department Officer of the Year is Officer Jonathan Solomon. Ask him to step up here. Officer Solomon has previously serviced to our country, the United States Marine Corps, before he came to Smithfield Police Department and completed his basic law enforcement training. During this last year, he's been an integral part of the new division of narcotics enforcement, made over fifty arrests here recently in December of 2000. He also is the department's only drug recognition expert, which means he is certified to give field tests to people in the field and identify if they are under the influence of any type of narcotic or other type of drug. This is very important as we look to continue to be strong against intoxicated drivers in our community. He is also authorized to testify to those observations in court as well. Officer Solomon leads the agency in our DWI arrest for 2000. And besides all that, he's also one of our field training officers and he trained our brand-new recruits for a period of up to three months at a time, preparing them for solo patrol service. Now, Officer Solomon, for his award, he receives a plaque that he gets to keep and place on his wall where his office is. And he also will be the first Smithfield Police Officer to have his name put on a plaque that hangs in the lobby of the police department as Officer of the Year. Every year from now on, the future officers of the year will be placed on that plaque. This is a very prestigious one. I don't think anything is more prestigious than something given by your peers. Officer Solomon is very well-deserving and just congratulate him on that.
Thank you guys for voting for me. I appreciate it. Thanks to my wife for being so supportive and not getting angry at all the time I have to spend after work or even coming on days off to help complete tasks and to get reports. Thanks guys, I appreciate it. Thank you.
As far as your age, when you have to take your glasses off to see what... Our next, our next award this evening is Officer Sergeant... Now, Sergeant Wood is in charge of investigations, Sergeant in charge of investigations under Lieutenant Powell, who's also here this evening. Sergeant Wood has over twenty years' experience at Bonfors. In order to receive this award beside the tenure, tenure of service, you also have to amount a large number of training hours. Training hours equal about twelve hundred hours training. That can be a combination of college credit and training hours. What they end up receiving is sixty, what they call points, these states. One point is worth one semester hour of college credit or twenty hours of actual police training, a certified class in the United States. You are very fortunate to have several people in the police department that have received this award, Sergeant Wood being the latest. I would ask you all to congratulate him on his hard work and his assistance in helping make this department a very professional agent.
Thank you, Chief. Continuing our agenda tonight with our police department, we have one officer that will be swearing in tonight. I'm going to ask Officer Prince if you can come forward, please. It's always a privilege to hear the success stories and also to start an officer's, to start your career here in Smithfield. I will raise your right and defeat this oath after me. I, Josephine Brianna Prince, be undersigned, solemnly swear or firm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are mine or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that I will be alert and diligent to enforce the criminal laws of this state, that I will not be influenced in any manner or on account of personal bias or prejudice, that I will be faithful and impartial to execute the duties of my office as a law enforcement officer, according to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment. So help me God. Mr. Manager, is there anything else under that employee's recognition?
Mr. Mayor, I would mention, we actually have one others, at least one other swearing in, but we're having some communication problems and may not have that, if that were to be able to go forward, we'll maybe amend it briefly and handle that. And the chief will let me know if that's, if we're ready to, we can move on.
All right, let's move to second item of presentation report, the adoption and resolution accepting the conditions of the amended letter of conditions and authorizing Mayor and the town clerk to execute forms regarding the Smithfield Crossing Project. And Mr. Garland Burnett's here, if you'll come forward on his behalf. Thank you for being here, Mr. Burnett.
Mayor, Town Council, it's my privilege to be here tonight. You may recall that on August the third, two thousand and ten, Rural Development presented a letter of conditions to the town council for funding of the Smithfield Crossing Project. The funding for the project identified at that time was six million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars in form of a loan at four percent, a term of thirty years, with a grant in the amount of four hundred thousand. Ordinarily, when we, when Rural Development delivers a letter of condition, we have the funding in hand. Funding through R was different. The national office maintained all the funds in Washington. So we delivered the letter of conditions, but at the end of, at the end of the day, there were more projects chasing too few, more projects than we had funds available under R to fund. That being the case, I met with Eric and Justin and given a very different funding environment in fiscal year two thousand and eleven with far fewer funds, we determined that Rural Development could realistically fund about half of the original request. With the balance of the funds coming from conventional credit sources and also the funding mix has changed a little bit and there's some additional funds that have been dedicated to the project through the federal highway administration. So you should have before you an amended letter of conditions. I just want to hit, you know, take a look at some of the, some of the changes associated with the original letter of conditions. It, it changes the funding to a loan in the amount of two million, eight hundred and six thousand, four hundred dollars at three and three-quarter percent for thirty years. So if there's a little bit of silver lining, at least the interest rate is quarter percent less than it was when we delivered back in August. In addition, these funds are, come out of our regular two thousand and eleven budget, so these are not R funds. Therefore, the project will not be subject to the Davis Bacon Act and the wage reporting that's required of the contract or virtue of that. In addition, the town will not be required to do the R reporting and the project will not be subject to Buy American Division. When we, in the original letter of conditions, we identified that the security would be a promise or note installment finance contract. With, with the change of having private or conventional financing is likely to be needed to complete the project, we anticipate that, that conventional funding is going to require a deed of trust on the roads and sidewalks and the utilities. Rural Development requires when we have participating funds, we have a parity position with the participating lender. So that is the change in this amended letter of conditions. And that pretty much, that pretty much spells out the changes in the letter of conditions there. And the last item on the first page describes the change in the mix of funding, so that we, you know, identifies the funds that we anticipate coming to the project to be able to fund it consistent with the, limited with the... If the town council has, has any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Garland?
In the absence of any questions, you should have in your packet of materials a proposed resolution to accept the amended letter of conditions. We'll note that whereas last time we, we addressed the town council, we anticipated that we would receive, we, we hoped that we would be receiving those funds from, from Washington through the R funding. This time, the funds have already been committed, actually they were obligated December thirtieth, two twenty-ten. Reason for that is that the interest rate at that time was three and three-quarters and increased to four and a quarter effective January first. So we took the liberty of having the mayor to sign some critical documents at that time to try to lock in that loyalty.
Any questions, Mr. Burnett? Well, we're excited about this loan opportunity, we'll get us started on the crossing project with the additional funds that we have. And there will be a presentation, I think we'd add this Thursday, in regard to those funds here in this council chamber, everyone is invited for that and we're excited about receiving that, that loan packet.
The acting, under Secretary of the USDA, Rural Development is planning to come to Smithfield for an announcement Thursday at ten o'clock and he'll be announcing funds allocated to projects to the CF Community Facility Program in the first quarter of fiscal year two thousand and eleven. Nationwide, there were fifty-four projects funded through Rural Development and two of them are here in Smithfield Crossing Project as well as the... I hope that as many town council members as possible...
We also think it's a big deal and we really appreciate it. Do I have a, a motion on the adoption of this resolution accepting the conditions of amended letter of... A motion, second, motion and a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Burnett.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one comment because we may not be able to... We, we may not be able to do it on Thursday because there will be a number of dignitaries there of all levels. But I do want to, I would do want to publicly thank Garland, his staff for his efforts, if they're, if they're ever were an example of perseverance and help. Garland has certainly represented that, we, we worked long and hard and he hung in there with us and he, he was a major... There were other people involved, obviously, he was a major part of making this happen. Obviously, very much appreciated.
Okay, moving down to the agenda, item three, amendment of Joseph B. George Beautification Endowment Fund. Ms. Kay Long, I think is here representing the Chairman of the Appearance Commission. Hold up, Ms. Kay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members. As Chairman of the Downtown Smithfield Appearance Commission, I'm here to present to you some changes to the J.B. George Endowment Fund Agreement. I believe you have a copy of those changes in your packet this evening. Several weeks ago, Mr. George contacted Mr. Williams, met with him, also met with me on some of these changes. Since then, he has also presented the changes to the Appearance Commission. They were seen as very positive amendments, additions, and were approved by the Appearance Commission. This evening, we submit them to you for your consideration and hopefully approved.
Any questions on the amendments that Ms. Long is presenting as Chairperson? Do you have any additions?
Mr. George, where are you? What was that you wanted to insert, the sense that the principal unequivocally could not be expended, is that correct?
Mr. George, what page did you want that inserted? And that reads, "The term encumbered shall mean that a purchase order has been issued prior to June first of the fiscal year and that the bill is rendered for payment by June thirtieth. The term fiscal year shall mean the town of Smithfield's fiscal year." And then there would be a statement there that only the interest would be spent and nothing from the, the balance, the principal.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, was that on? Okay, would you, is that on your copy?
We have it in our copy, Mr. George.
All right, you have that on your copy, then that's...
Okay. With that addition, gentlemen, what is... I make a motion and we accept these changes. Motion and second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, we've got that added? Yes, sir.
It's included, yes.
Yes, sir, that is included. Got that, Adam Clerk.
And I, you know, the town is very thankful for your monetary contribution. Lightest beauty and...
Mr. Mayor, and I hate to, let, let me, I don't want to belabor the meaning, but I want to thank Mr. George as well. His, his willingness to do this enhances our objectives to amplify the town and Kay Long is the Chairman of the Appearance Commission, has revived that group, I believe. Councilmember Harris has been acting as the liaison and they really are doing some tremendous work. One most recent example, I hate to not publicly thank her and her colleagues for their help. Thank you.
Okay, with item four being moved to another time, item five, Johnston County Visitor Bureau, Ms. Donna Corrigan, you're welcome.
Council members, good evening. The report you have is actually the one submitted in January, so the numbers that you're looking at are for January and not through December. So I wanted to point out that the revenues for the town of Smithfield currently are ahead of budget by twenty-four hundred dollars. So you're on track to be ahead by the end of the year and the last two months continue to be up, so that's good news, revenue's going in the right direction. And the second document you had is our marketing budget and I have presented it to you in a little different format based on project. You can see the budgeted item and the expenditure item per month as it go across, you see what revenues are being spent on billboards or advertising, printing. So it's broken down for you to look at. Any questions on these spreadsheets?
Any questions for, for...
Some of the new things that we're working on for Smithfield, I know the committee, audience can't see, but we've designed the new logo for the Farmers Market. We decided to work on that committee and help the committee out to market the new Farmers Market that starts in April. And you can tell it picks up the Smithfield logo and you'll see that in different promotions coming up. The Bureau is also building websites, individual websites for the town of Smithfield called visit smithfield.org. It is the first of six individual town websites the Bureau's building for the destinations in Johnston County and it is up and launched. If you want to take a look at that, it's visit smithfield.org. And there's also one up for the Ham and Yam Festival that we've built in the last thirty days. Please go on and give us feedback from those websites and anything that we should do or improve on, just let us know.
Great job, Donna, appreciate everything. Do I have a motion we accept, Mr. Ford, or the President? Motion and second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're moving now to the appointments of the new Farmers Market Committee. Tim, you want to speak to us on that?
I think you have before your, your agenda, the folks that have applied to the Smithfield Farmers Market Advisory... to the Smithfield Farmer's Market Advisory Committee. Unless there's a need to, I won't name all of those, but beside all of those names, the, um, the positions they're wishing to fill, I think the only one, there was one position, the artist craftsman, uh, position. There were two folks, so I think you have a ballot to, um, to vote for one of the two of those to fill that position.
Gentlemen, complete that ballot and pass it around and be able to present it as necessary.
And I guess once that's done, if we could, council could approve all of those, uh, members.
While they're doing the ballot, Tim, why don't you share a little bit about where we are with the market?
Um, just a brief, brief update.
Yes, please.
Um, let's see the, as you all may, may remember, um, Mayor Evans kind of started this process back in the spring of two thousand and ten. And, um, pretty much been working on it, uh, nonstop since then. There's several community public interest, interest meetings. And, uh, we did a survey, um, about when folks would most like to see the market in, in hours and things such as that. Uh, what came out of that, um, and we will probably carry forward with, uh, the market. We open on Fridays, um, starting April eighth. And we'll be open every Friday through October twenty-eighth. On Fridays, it will be open from eleven AM to six PM. Um, we'll also, uh, be open during some special events. Uh, possibly the first weekend, we may be open on Friday and Saturday. During the ham and yam festival, probably on Friday and Saturday. Uh, then maybe a time or two in the summer and then, uh, in the fall. So there'll be some special event days also thrown in there, uh, yet to be determined. The location's going to be right out here, um, town park or courtyard where we'll be starting out. Uh, right now, we know we have, uh, four vendors and we've talked to several others who we believe are going to be coming on board. So that's, that's looking very positive. Um, we do have a website, thanks to, uh, Jamie Briscoe, um, Jay Goblin with the IT, uh, department here with the town of Smithfield. It's linked through the town of Smithfield's website. And they've done a great job with it, looks really good. There's a lot of information there. Also, we have a Facebook page, I'm told, I'm not a Facebook person, but we've got that and have, uh, a number of, um, likes or whatever you call it on there, so, uh, that seems to be going well. And, um, we're just, um, you know, waiting to get the, the board, the full board appointed and then we'll carry forward with, um, all the planning that needs to be done to get, to get open. But it, so far, we're getting, uh, good response and, um, some good positive calls from it. I think, I think it's going to be successful.
I do want to recognize Mark Lane is, is our chairman of our communities here. Mark's worked a lot with the committee and he's done a tremendous job with this board, I appreciate that, Mark. Uh, I'm hearing nothing but excitement in the community about the market. And so we need everybody to support it as we go forward. We need to vote on these members as presented. Do I have a motion that these as presented to be approved?
A motion.
Motion have a second?
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Black sign. Ms. Courtney Burnell, which is approved, uh, as by ballot. Madam Clerk, if you put that down, please, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mayor, before we leave, let me make just one other item that you don't have to do anything with this evening. And then, Paul, you correct me if I'm wrong. We also, uh, the use as proposed is permitted, but it's, we have to get a, we have to meet our own conditional use standards, if I'm not mistaken. So prior to the opening of the market, we will, we have initiated that, that process. It's staff driven and we will run it through its normal process and bring that back to the board prior to the, uh, market actually being officially opened. I did want to mention that. I got that right, Paul? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, we're moving into our public hearings. We have one public hearing for the sake of business tonight. Conditional use permit request to operate a private nightclub on property located on the south side of West Market Street, approximately four hundred and eighty feet east of intersection NC highway two ten. Mark's here to present the public hearings tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, Russell Hendricks is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a private nightclub on property located within the B three zoning district. Uh, the property in consideration is located on south, the south side of West Market Street, approximately four hundred and forty-eight feet east of intersection with NC highway two ten. Uh, as you all know, private nightclubs are loosely defined as establishments that serve liquor by the drink and are not considered full-service restaurants. In accordance with the town of Smithfield Unified Development Ordinance, um, nightclubs are permitted in the B three zoning district with a conditional use permit. Uh, this request is considered a change in use, therefore the site must come into full compliance with relevant standards. Uh, the applicant has submitted a site plan that shows adequate parking and landscaping as required by code. The applicant has also provided a certifiable check for the amount of the improvements and wishes to be in operation as soon as possible. Playing board at its January sixth meeting reviewed this case and recommended approval of, uh, of the conditional use permit. The town council's also requested a, and, uh, requested, uh, conditions for, uh, conditional use permit. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Have, I have a site plan.
Gentlemen, here for me for the location. This request, any questions?
Uh, yes, currently, uh, providing the conditional use permit is granted. Since the change in use is occurring, it triggers improvements to the site such as parking and landscaping. And the applicant has shown interest in doing that through providing a schedule. Uh, whether it meets the, the, the conditions found in the finding of facts, I believe it does. As far as access, safe access, ingress, egress.
Any other questions? I got a question. The first, Ms. Hendricks?
Uh, yes, I believe Russell Hendricks at one time was the manager or the, or the barmaid for the, uh, bar media across the street. Last resort.
You know, had any, uh, problems with, uh, with that business?
Uh, at the current location, I'm not aware of any problems. Of course, there are numerous, uh, code violations across the street, but at this current location, I'm not aware of any zoning type violations. To, to answer your question, there, there were in fact, uh, we acknowledge that as well. There were problems with the prior location that were considerably complicated and, and, uh, we had a, a plan in place and it simply wasn't, uh, it didn't work out. Issues between how the building and how the business and, um, I'm not aware of any on this location.
Any other questions? Motion, this be approved? Motion is there a second?
Aye.
That's the answer? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're under the, uh, the second item there was removed later date. Coming now to the time for citizens' comments. If there's anyone who, uh, wishes to be heard, please step forward, we're glad to hear you.
I apologize for having a few copies that we need to pass by the court. I have habits every time I talk, I have apologies in the school. My computer forever ran out of ink this afternoon, so we have a few copies.
If you'll do me a favor, please state your name and address.
My name is Jane Allen.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, now speak. Glad to hear you.
Um, I understand there were several major sporting events going on this weekend in the area. There was a hockey game in Raleigh and there was a basketball game between people who wear light blue and people who wear red. Um, but there was also a major sporting event happening here in Smithfield. There is a basketball tournament at the, uh, Smithfield Recreation and Aquatic Center. The, um, Bridge to Sports Organization out of Durham is a group that provides sporting and athletic activities for people with disabilities. And they sponsored a tournament for youth in wheelchair basketball. And we approached, my, my son Timothy plays with this group. And we approached, uh, Tim Johnson and individuals at the recreation center. And they were very cooperative in working with us. We got lots of positive feedback from visitors from out of state who had come to participate in this tournament. There were athletes from Alabama and from Virginia and a team from Charlotte came in. Most of the individuals for our quote home team were from the Raleigh and Durham area. There's two or three families that live in Johnston County that participated. Um, one, one of our parents that works in, uh, the school system in Wake County commented that they wish they had a facility next to their school, next to their high school that was as good a quality. Um, the G, excuse me, the gym and other rooms and parking there at the site were very accessible, very, um, well received by the visitors there. The staff was wonderful. We came to them over and over again, where is this? What, how do we take care of that? They always met us with smiles and cooperation and helped us to get everything done that we needed to. We tried to host it in Durham County, Wake County, Orange County, because that's where more of our families were. But there was not a facility in those counties that either could or would accommodate us. And so we are very proud, as a citizen of Smithfield, very proud to have invited the folks from the Triangle area down to see our southern hospitality. While we had the tournament going on, there were individuals, uh, using hotel rooms, eating restaurant meals and at least one van full of ladies took off to go to the outlet center Saturday night before they closed. So we think we, uh, added back to the community and we very much appreciate y'all's, uh, facilities being there. Your interest in having sports for people of every ability. The, um, Miracle League field is of interest to us. We have been taking Timothy to Raleigh to participate in their Miracle League and we are glad to have a few less miles on the car and able to play here. And we are also excited about the prospect of having an inclusive, um, playground for the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This was a great event and it was, uh, wonderful to see and we're glad that you could host it here and be a part of our community. Because this, it was wonderful. It's always great when you go out to the community park and strike and you see it filled up as it has been. And this was another great event. Thank you again. Any other persons or citizen comments like to come up and be heard?
Rob Selma's finest, uh, over tonight and, uh...
Doesn't speak much well for Selma, does it?
Yeah, it's still...
Council, um, good to see you guys. I know most of you, my name is Eric Selma. Town council in the big city of Selma, this is my name as well. Lifelong friend and I'll tell you, we, we had, uh, three different meetings today.
Six thirty?
Six thirty and here. So we had more to do's than we had today, but here we are, we're a little bit frazzled, so, so bear with us. I want to come to you and describe a scenario, give you a little background of what, one of the things that the town of, uh, Selma council has done. And then we are interested in your council doing this work. Uh, and I want to digress a little bit. So the, uh, full disclosure here and let you know, not only am I a town councilman in Selma, I'm also a member of the advisory board at this high school. My voice is a little bad, I, the, uh, hopefully the, uh, antibiotics are beginning to kick in a little bit. I've got a serious cold here. Um, so probably in the last two, three months for the advisory board of the triple S, one of the things that we have looked at is the lack of technology in the classroom. None of us probably, uh, had this kind of technology, obviously, when we were in schools, but we have a lot different. We didn't, we were in school. And one of the things that was brought up is certainly at least two newest high schools. Every classroom has a smart board. A smart board being a high-tech thing where you teach and it's audiovisual. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it or not, but each classroom in fact has one. That is not the case at Smithfield Selma, um, nor is it something we want to make the case just to, to, to do so. Uh, and princ- in our discussions with the principals, one of the things we said is, where do you need technology that you don't have? And by the way, tell us the most bang for the buck, tell us what the options are. To slim that down, one of the, the most bang for the buck is a thing called a technology cart. Technology cart, uh, gentleman, is, uh, literally a cart that has electrical plugs in it. It also has on it a laptop computer, also has on it what I'll call a data show or a projector. Um, it also can come with what's called a mimeo board. Mimeo board is a portable whiteboard that you literally stick on top of another whiteboard and that makes that then a smart board. It is much cheaper, that, everything I just mentioned is much cheaper than a smart board. And the other advantage is it's portable. Now, they have some of those available for checkout to some of the teachers now, but the demand and supply is just not there. So one of the things over probably two to three months that we hit Michael Tyler with is, Michael, tell us who the teachers are that want this technology, that have the information to teach using it, but don't have access. Give us the numbers, tell us what we're talking about, so we'll know what we're talking about in dollars. Uh, Landis has got all the particulars, but I'm going to fly at ten thousand feet. The bottom line is it came out to forty-one thousand dollars for everybody to have everything they wanted. Um, and one of the questions that we were asked, you know, we're saying, children in Smithfield and Selma, children, the, the, the young adults in Smithfield and Selma, go to one high school. They don't have the same technology and the same advantage that some of the other kids in the high school, uh, in the county does. Do, excuse me. And that obviously was a worry, so we were saying, what can we do? Landis boldly turned to me after one of those meetings when we finally had the, uh, dollars and he said, "Mr. Councilman, would the town of Selma put up ten thousand dollars to help purchase this equipment if we could get twenty thousand from the county and we could get ten thousand from Smithfield?" So, uh, Smithfield, excuse me. My first answer was pretty simple, no. No, you're coming to us out of budget, okay? You're coming to us at a time when we don't know what the revenues are going to be the last half of the year. No, no different scenario than you guys are in, okay? But as we got into it further and we examined it, one of the things that, that I began to realize we could do was get some serious bang for the buck and make it. I don't have to tell you guys that there have been different efforts to try to, some things that we've tried to do to try to help education. And, you know, one of the nice things we do have is since it is Smithfield Selma High School, all of our taxpayers, all our constituents, constituents, constituents' kids go to that one high school. So that was certainly a factor, but when we looked at saying, what can we do? How can we get that bang for the buck? And the answer was, if we could put ten thousand dollars, we eliminate a middleman. We no longer have a scenario, do I worry that the money gets where it's supposed to and get and buys what it's supposed to buy? We eliminate that middleman, we specifically give this money to the school board for this specific task. We voted on it and I'll, and I'll, I'll do this and we'll digress a little bit. When we did it in Selma, and I made the motion, so I know exactly how it went. We moved that we would put ten thousand dollars toward this. It's earmarked toward this specific technology we just spoke of. It also is contingent upon the town of Smithfield putting up ten thousand dollars. And it is contingent upon Board of Education putting at least twenty thousand dollars, which means the remainder, uh, to get that. And what that allowed us to do was get a, you know, for one dollar, we get four dollars worth of technology. We eliminate the middleman, we make sure that every teacher who has the ability to use it and wants the ability to use it has that. Now, I won't tell you that this is not an unusual step. This is very unusual. This is a very unusual step. And everything that's gone through your mind went through my mind. And then our vote was three to one and the one person who voted against it went through every scenario that I went through, um, when I decided to make my yes vote. And I decided to make the yes vote not because there weren't some scary things, because it was scary. First thing that came to me was what kind of door does this open up? Let's be honest, if we give ten thousand dollars to Smithfield Selma, South Smithfield Elementary going to ask? South Smithfield Primary going to ask you? Yada, 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 yada. Uh, one of the ways, and we have not decided this, but one of the ways we may deal with this is we may in each of our years' subsequent budgets, put ten thousand dollars out there to do something for education and then have people bring us proposals. Now if we do that, we're not interested in giving a hundred dollars here or two hundred dollars here. Doing something bang for the buck. And I guess for me it got, it was pretty simple. It is unusual, but we're in pretty unusual times. You know, I've, I've not lived through a time like we're in. And I can tell you that the kids that we're educating are going to compete with Chinese kids and Indian kids and everybody else all across the world that are getting superior education. And I don't mind telling you, I have a junior at Triple S and I don't want to think that he's got any less, uh, advantage than anybody else. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I've talked too long. I could tell you everything I went through. I could tell you all the stuff that we worried about. Bottom line for me was in spite of all those things, it seemed to me to be an intelligent place where we could get a lot of bang for the buck and do good specifically for the kids that we as councilors are responsible for.
Thank you, Ms. Selma. Landis, do you have anything to add in that, in that presentation?
Eric did a very good job. It's interesting, I was at, we both had a meeting tonight at the high school pertaining to the budget. We have some things to discuss. But yes, Eric did not share, but I have shared with some members. Selma's committee, we now have the board of patients and members. They have also shared if there is any over lines and they care of the over lines if it is budgeted and provide additional funding that we need. So we're really here with hat in hand, hoping you'll step forward with ten thousand dollars to our students. It will be a great economic stimulus for our community. And it, uh, shows our strong support for the schools and for the success of our students. Technology, that will make a big difference.
I will detail the council about that. When Selma voted to do this, we were very cognizant of that, that we did not want to pay anybody. I made sure I talked to Daniel before we voted on this, letting him know what's going to happen, et cetera, because we want to work together. Again, what I didn't want to do is come in here and say two out of three have done it and you feel like, oh, your scenarios obviously are different. But I want you to, to understand, we did this in a sense of cooperation and we continue to do everything in a sense of cooperation that we already have with Smithfield Selma. I'm not a crazy guy.
Question, Eric, uh, we just have to be in this year's budget, we can be in next year's. What do you think about, uh, would this be as good as possible?
I, I think the answer to that question is as possible. They, they have a budget and if they can get the yes, I think they're going to win.
That's right. As we, yeah, the council, yeah, there is reason that we need, or our initial budget, our natural budget, wait the next one, we do have certain options that we choose if we get the towns. Town could be for us, we would just want to be in, uh, two thousand twelve, but we do have options that we will afford. Or I use eighty-five thousand dollars out of our telephone, high school pastor this year of technology, but we can't move some money around. There we just get, whatever we have to push.
Yes, I would advise you, you don't have to make a vote, you can take it under advisement. If you feel like there's something important to do, it's entirely up to, it's a pleasure to counsel.
I think at this time, we need to take it under advisement, get a better handle on what our budget figures are. Because we're asking our departments and organizations to toe lag and hold on for this budget we just passed and Eric, the budget too, was, uh, very, very tight. And we are still trying to get an idea now and we're going to act on setting up some dates to see what the future, next budget is going to be. So I think we need to take it under advisement and, uh, work through and see what can happen later, maybe.
My personal opinion is that, uh, I don't, we don't think we're going to do anything this year while we fast start to work in because, uh, I would like to see maybe if this, you just, next year.
One of the things that, that, uh, my concern is that once this is, this comes out, as you know, there are three schools right here in Smithfield. So this would almost, granted, there are certain things that the lower grades get grant wise and things like that. But it could start tripling our contribution if we were to move forward with it. And that's something that we need to be consider at this point. And so I just think that, uh, if this budget is, uh, we did not have it in it, I think we just need to take a look. Uh, Mr. Williams, what is your thinking about? And you will be giving us ideas, I think, over later in the month as to where we'll be heading. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We're, we're going to hopefully tonight set, uh, at least two, uh, pre-budget development workshops and, uh, I would agree, it's one of those rare evenings, I, I agree with it. I understand what everybody's talking about in the request and I understand the reservations the council will have. And I'm as big a proponent of education as anyone, I understand that. But I, I do think giving it some thoughtful consideration. Prudent and I would, I think Landis and Eric would probably, uh, welcome that thoughtful consideration, I believe. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. We will take it under advisement, that's consensus.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Williams. We will, 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 we as a board, it's coming from my name, as these gentlemen have stated, we're asking departments to cut their budgets. We're going to have to cut back on promises and services and so, and there's, there's still a lot of funding dollars that we don't, uh, put in, uh, three billion dollars for the law, we didn't say, that is, we don't know how this will affect us. And like we say, it's, some people may think it, we're going to scheme things, it's only ten thousand dollars. We've got a lot of bills coming, coming through soon, uh, that ten thousand dollars. And I simply don't want to close the door on it. It's, it's worthy of discussion, uh, as being in a broker, real estate broker in Smithfield for ten plus years, I can tell you that the number one question, and I fear I've said this before, the number one question that I was asked when people, when the town, when the schools, and, you know, I don't know, it's necessarily our responsibility as a board. I know it's not our responsibility as a board to provide that funding, but then again, uh, you know, if there's a way that we can, you know, at least look into it a little bit more. I will tell you, I saw a statistic, uh, last month, we had a presentation and the statistic is that, um, and don't, don't quote me on it, but college freshmen, when they enter college, by the time they graduate, in four years, the things that they learn as far as from a technological standpoint, they're already on the table by the time they graduate. That is how fast things are changing. If you don't believe it, you look, we talk about China, the economy, the world economy has changed. And our children are our future, okay? They are, so we, we, we need to be mindful of that. Whether we do this or not, I just wanted to, I'm not endorsing this, but I, I, I believe, I believe, I'm taking this as an endorsement, but I just want to think like you do, for what you're doing. But, but everybody, Triple S is a box. We do have a box, we should be proud of.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate these guys coming here tonight. I, I, um, I have a real problem with us supporting the education system at this point here in Johnson County. We've got a school superintendent who has seen fit to give some, what I think are absorbent in, increases in salaries to some of those employees at his office who are making in and around the six figures. He's also spoken openly about doing away with teachers here in Johnson County and I don't like being put in the middle of the situation. And I certainly support Triple S and I told Landis this on the phone the other day, but, uh, I think that our school superintendent and our school board should do a better job of giving these people the funding that they need at our school.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Do you have any other comments? So at this point, if it's taken under advisement, then we will be back and take everybody on.
Do I have a motion on the conservative agenda?
Sort of a, check it.
Pushing second all those before, right? Moving into old business, update on emergency services coverage in the west, with the, uh, Chief Paris and Mr. Manager, y'all address that, please.
Mayor, Councilman and, uh, Mr. Williams, I personally like to take an opportunity, if, if you minds to thank the staff members, the officers of the department, because they have put endless hours of work into studying numerous, uh, options, uh, that we could provide service in the West Smithfield area. I, I just appreciate their hard work and dedication to try to come up with a, a plan that will make, make everyone happy and provide the adequate service that we need. If I could ask you to refer to page fifty-nine in your agenda packet, I've basically simply just done some options and entitled it, uh, Emergency Services for West Smithfield. Uh, option one, I'll just go through them briefly and try to answer any questions you have, is to purchase and renovate the wooded property. That was the original property that kind of came up as a possibility and we put together a plan that we feel like provided a permanent home for fire EMS and, and included a permanent home for a police substation, uh, as well at what we felt like was a very reasonable price tag at less than a million dollars. Option two, uh, that we were able to come up with was to actually do something very temporary and that would be in the form of renting a single-family home during the time that the bridge is closed and essentially park a truck and an ambulance, uh, in the driveway. Not sure what time of year we would be talking about. We'd have to make some concessions to keep things from freezing or, and/or keep things cool. I've included some fairly random numbers based on a twelve-month period. I know they've said the bridge would be out six to nine months, but, uh, we felt like twelve months would probably be a realistic window. We could always back off of that. Uh, we were able to locate a company that, uh, will actually rent turnout gear, fire gear for employees. Some costs, uh, involved in that would certainly be cheaper than trying to outfit folks for staffing. Looking at the possibility of using part-time employees or full-time temporary employees that would only be for the twelve-month period or nine-month period, whatever that may be that the bridge is actually out, provide some service in that area. Option three, uh, was to look at a commercial building. The only reason that we stayed away a little bit of the commercial building is because of the sleeping quarter situation. A house is already designed to house people to sleep in, whereas a, a commercial building is not. And it leads to different alterations to the building and becomes a little bit more complicated when you get into building and building code requirements and so forth. So it is certainly still an option and that, that is doable, uh, whether it be a single-family residential home somewhere in the West Smithfield area. Or option three being some type of commercial building, even the former C and J Carpet Building came up as just a possibility of discussion. And of course, option four that's listed at the bottom of the page is to respond from our current location. Uh, and if you turn over to page sixty in your agenda package, you'll see we've done some comparisons. The locations that you'll see are merely just random locations. We just chose some high occupancy, uh, high frequency call type locations. You'll see there, uh, Classic Care, Furniture Market, Brett Haven, West Smithfield Elementary School. Uh, you'll see four different comparisons there. You'll see current, which means tonight, if we have an alarm, we'll respond to that location. That's the amount of time that it would take us and that includes the nine-one-one turnaround time. There's an average type turnaround time that from the time the telecommunications receives the call from the caller, dispatches the needed resource, uh, till the time they arrive on scene. And all that's factored into this chart that you'll see for us and the other departments as well. When you, you see the red box or orange color, it says detour. That gives you a timeframe, uh, if we took the same equipment from our current location and did the detour around the railroad extension and responded to that same location, you'll see the comparisons, uh, for that. We also looked at Wilson's Mills Fire Department's Station Two and Wilson Mills Fire Department's Station One, and you'll see those reflected on your chart as well in the green and purple color. At this point, um, we have looked at all those different locations to try to decide who could provide the best and most adequate service. It was brought up also, could we contract with Wilson Mills to provide the service over there during the time the bridge was out? The short answer was that is I'm not sure they could get there any faster than we can just from responding where we are. Look at those number comparisons, I think you tend to agree with that. To take it a step further, we approached the chief of Wilson's Mills Fire Department and his officers and proposed the possibility of them taking over responsibility and, and responding. Uh, and you'll see a letter on page sixty-one that's signed by the chief and the board of directors for Wilson's Mills Fire Department and I'll sort of give you the quick and rundown of that. Essentially, they're saying they will continue to respond mutual aid with us as they do today, but they are not in a position to take over the responsibility to private, provide primary service in that area. Uh, and if I could pause here for one moment, I would like to bring attention, uh, Chief Barber, he's, he's certainly a good friend of the town of Smithfield. We have a wonderful working relationship with all our mutual aid departments and Wilson's Mills is certainly one of our viable ones. Chief Barber has recently had a heart attack, is in Wake Med in very, very serious condition. I would ask that everyone, please keep Chief Barber and his family and the department in your, in your thoughts and prayers. He's, he's quite a friend to the, to the Fire Department. We certainly work cooperatively together on many incidents and, uh, our, I appreciate you, pause for that. The additional question came up about Johnston Ambulance Service providing EMS service in the area, uh, which certainly was a possibility. Uh, we had to start with the county, uh, Emergency Services, uh, Medical Director, which is Dr. Edwin Hartman. I know Dr. Hartman from many years of service here. He is the medical director. He's, his license is what we operate EMS under for the entire county. So our Smithfield ambulances, when they roll down the road, were compliments of Dr. Hartman's license. So, uh, the letter on page sixty-two and sixty-three outlined, uh, his position on the possibility of asking Johnston Ambulance to take over. And I'll, I'll sort of paraphrase that for you as well, if you haven't had an opportunity to read it. Essentially, he would not be able to approve that change. It was likely to be in the best interest of patients to, uh, continue to be served by Smithfield as they were. With that, uh, you know, we're looking at some very difficult options. Um, a good portion of this is that we, we've got some time. Bridge is not going out next week. I'd say a year and a half or so that we can continue to have discussions and continue to work together as a group, and hopefully we'll be able to find something that suits everyone's needs and continues to serve the citizens.
Is, is any questions right now for the chief as to some of the options?
Have you had any, have you had any discussion with the Sherleys on their building?
Uh.
Arvins. The first two storey brick building there.
Just the ones that the bar moved out of. The bar couldn't bring it in.
Anyway, they're willing to give you the building, pay the taxes on it, rent-free. Downside is that you got to run that unless you have no shelter. Anyway, they, they're interested in discussing it. Uh, meet, meet anywhere near your needs. It would certainly be a financial windfall down. When they're in a period of time, you know, it's not lost current, they understand that we do. The end of our needs, all we would have to do is just walk away. But they're willing to pay the taxes on it, rent-free, and we would be obligated. Is whatever we need to do to it. Bring it up whenever we need.
Well, and, and I, I appreciate that, though. Mayor Protem, it's, you would be surprised the people who have made calls and said, I've, I've got everything from a chicken house to a, to a Taj Mahal that would be glad to rent you, lease you, give you, uh, a lot of people have turned out. You know, unfortunately, what, what we've got to decide as a group is, is what direction we want to go and how much money we're willing to spend. Anything is doable. There's a certain amount of money that's going to have to be spent, and for example, the building you're talking about, you know, it, it sounds great, uh, to get it for rent-free, limited amount of time, but to make it usable, we're going to have to do a certain amount of things in it so that it's habitable. And a commercial building is not necessarily designed to sleep people in. So that's where we kind of get into territories. At some point, we'll, we'll need to, to settle on an area, and one of the reasons we've stopped sort of doing, we were trying to do a site plan for every building that popped up, and it really became labor-intensive. So in an effort to, um, get to an area that we can all sort of agree on, then we'll try to do all the due diligence that comes along with that. Fair answer.
That makes a lot of sense to me. I have a question for Eric, and maybe you can answer this, maybe be the mayor that answers this. But what, what, what's a realistic timeframe that we're looking at the actual construction of the bridge? What, what, when is it going to get torn down? Is it going to be in the fiscal year we have that we're going to start working on, or is it going to be the next fiscal year?
Well, help me out with the timing. The latest is that, well, there's a construction, it's, it's, it's very complicated. Uh, they will not begin, uh, the bridge will not be closed until Brookdale Road Extension is open. We know that, that's scheduled for the end of two thousand, two thousand twelve. The timeline, we have, the official word now is that they hope to close it only for nine months. We have been told through other conversations that those that can hopefully get it done in six months, that's speculation at this point. The other thing that's complicating it, there's a period of time that they, that they cannot do any work in the water itself because of the, uh, the fish and the spawning. And I believe that timeframe is from, help me out here. About five months, it's, it's, uh.
So what I'm getting at is, but it sounds like to me this is not going to be a budget item for this coming year. It'll be two years from then. Am I right in assuming that budget, we're going to start working on, not the current budget, the one that starts July first of twenty-eleven, it will not be in that budget?
I, it, it, it would only be, uh.
It could.
I do think it's an, I, I think it's one of those, and I hate to, it's, it's in some ways similar to the, uh, discussion regarding schools, it's, it's one of those big, big, uh, big budget items that we, we probably need to talk about it. It's coming here, but as far as a particular appropriation, I, I think you're.
My point is, is this an item that needs to be a hot topic on the budget we're working on. I mean, one of these days, we're all going to have to put our big boy bridges on, and we're going to have to decide what we're going to do over there in West Smithfield. And, you know, we can sit here and ask Patrick to do those reports, and we can look at this, we can look, but eventually, we've got to make a decision. And the question I have is, you know, when is that? Is something that we, we need to decide on by the end of this budget process that we're getting ready to start July first? How long are we going to stop on off? But at some point, we may come up with, I mean, we're going to have to do something.
Well, my suggestion, it's been all along, is that I don't want to have to wait until the eleventh hour to get something organized and protect our citizens outside of town. So my suggestion is, is we don't have to make a decision tonight, obviously. But I do think we do consider options as we go into this year's budget, uh, this coming year's budget, uh, so that we can plan accordingly.
Well, it's obviously a financial issue. It, it sounds like to me that the whole thing, we're throwing this ball back and forth, it has to do with finances. And, you know, a, as, as, uh, my councilman from West Smithfield says, we're not going to be able to, or maybe it was the, the, Patrick that said it, we're not going to be able to put a facility over there or protection over there or nothing. So at some point, we're going to have to figure that out. I think we have time, but, you know, I, I would urge us at some point to put our heads together and try to figure out exactly what it is the council desires. And, you know, I'm not saying we need to do it today, but, you know, if we wait till, it sounds like to me, if, if we don't address this thing in the next six to eight months, then we're going to come up at the last minute, and that's what we don't want to do. And given our financial situation that we're going through this budget process, there's no guarantee our budget's going to be better for the following year. So it's probably something we need to address sooner rather than later. That's all I'm saying.
My, my suggestion is even though we by law only have to adopt eight, twelve months, this budget, we really need to think about, obviously, we need to think about this with your eleven, twelve. We need to think about whether you're following it, whether it be a balanced position or long-term debt, or whatever it is, we need, we need some discussion about it.
All I'm saying is we need to, at some point, we need to make a decision, whatever that is.
Counselman, the, the reason I, and it may be, you know, in hindsight, maybe it was, it was too early. The reason I brought this up in our actual budget retreat a, a year ago was just to get the discussions going. It's something that I, as a professional, I have an obligation to advise you of what we need to continue to service. And I don't, if I was in your position, I would not be blindsided at the last minute with something of this magnitude. Felt like you needed some time to be able to digest all this and take a look at it and weigh the options. And that's one of the reasons we brought it up at the, at the retreat and continue our discussions. We're certainly trying to carry out whatever the wishes are. I, I just have that professional obligation to advise you what you think you should do, and then certainly what you do is your decision.
Mr. Dr. Do you have any comments you'd like to make to South Smithfield side?
Not at this time. Probably, we're not probably going to have an idea of what we need to do.
Actually, what, I don't think we need a motion on this in any way. We can just enable it, we can just have a discussion under, uh, the process.
Chief. Moving on to the new business side of the awarding of the rolling stock bids approved in the current budget and financing already arranged. Uh, I recognize the manager and his staff. The first one is the knuckle boom loader, Mr. Rant.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, city manager, town council. Uh, the public works department was fortunate enough to be, uh, granted in the budget this year, replacement of some much-needed equipment in the department. And I feel that the staff has, has done an extraordinary job on, uh, on trying to, uh, um, turn over every rock we can with the, the, the president of mine of every, every dollar counts. So what we've done, we, we've went to local municipalities, and we, we've kind of compared notes on what was working for those guys. Uh, uh, we went to larger entities like, uh, the city of Fayetteville and Goldsboro, and, and, and kind of weighed out the pros and cons on what was working with those guys. And we took in consideration of us, you know, Smithfield's a pretty good-sized sanitation district, and, and I'm proud to say it's a part of my department, and we're, we're very knowledgeable with that as well. So we took all that information into consideration, and came up with some pretty good, uh, specification requirements. Bid those things out, and with that being said, I want to go into what we've got. Uh, in, in this year's budget, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, the sanitation department was approved a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of a knuckle boom loader, uh, truck. That, that particular piece of equipment is used in the everyday collection of yard waste, construction debris, and materials that miscellaneous materials put out by, uh, residents in residential areas. Uh, it's very vital to our operations. Staff sent out bid packets, uh, uh, which contain required specifications to ten, uh, vendors. Eight dealers responded with, uh, twenty-two bids, which was extraordinary, a lot. Uh, we've never had that many. On December the twenty-second, at town hall at two P M, bid packets were opened. The lowest bid that met the specified requirements, uh, was submitted by Cavalier Equipment Corporation, which was their bid packet number six. The, these guys submitted ten and eleven bid packets, that's how the economy is, is basically come down to. Um, bid packet number six was the lowest, uh, bid that, that, uh, met our requirements, uh, for the amount of ninety-seven thousand thirty-one dollars. The other bids that came in from competitor companies ranged from a hundred and two seven ninety to a hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred twelve dollars. And I've got supporting documents that are attached to this sheet, and I'll show you their names and the actual amounts that they, they bid on. Um, what staff is requesting from council tonight is, uh, uh, the permission to proceed with the purchase of the knuckle boom loader from, uh, the Cavalier Equipment, uh, Corporation for the amount of ninety-seven thousand thirty-one dollars. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
What brand is?
It is a GMC.
The knuckle boom?
Uh, it's a Lightning Loader. It's a Peterson.
Do you have, do you have that branded service now?
All three of them, our trucks have them, so the parts will be interchangeable. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
What did we allocate for that?
Hundred and twenty thousand. That's those rocks I was telling you that we were uncovering.
We'll get that back.
I think for, 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 for tracking purposes and the minutes, it would be good to have a, I mean, we can do it all at one vote, but if, we would probably prefer a.
I make a motion that we approve this request.
Second. Motion is second, those favor, aye? Aye. Affirmed. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, rear loader refuse truck, Mr. Rant?
Yes, sir. As I stated earlier, we were very fortunate this year to be able to replace this equipment. Um, this year's budget also, the sanitation department was approved a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, for the purchase of a twenty-seven cubic yard rear loader trash truck. This equipment is used in the daily collection of household garbage in the residential areas, as you all know. Um, staff sent out, uh, bid packets, uh, which contain required specifications to twelve vendors. Eight dealers responded with a total of twenty-seven bids. Um, on December the twenty-second, at three P M, those, those bids were opened at town hall. The lowest bid that met the specified requirements was submitted by AMIC Equipment, uh, their bid packet number eleven, with an amount of a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. The other bids that came in from the competitor companies ranged from a hundred and thirty-two, six forty-eight, up to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. I have, uh, support documents of all those, uh, vendors, as well as the, um, prices that came in, as this is attached to this sheet as well. You guys should all have a copy of it. Uh, what staff is requesting the council, uh, award the purchase of the twenty-seven cubic yard, uh, rear loading refuse truck to AMIC Equipment for the price of a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. This is a freightliner, it's a twenty-twelve freightliner frame and chassis with the, uh, it is the Magnum, Cobra Magnum body. Co, this Cobra Magnum is the brand. AMIC Equipment. That's the name of the actual body. Um, we, we, we went to, that, that's the actual bodies that the city of Goldsboro are using, they're, they're very happy with theirs.
Any other questions?
Make a motion, we approve that request.
Second. Motion is second, those favor, aye? Aye. Thank you, Mr. Rant. Uh, Chief Scott, I think you're next up about the police cars and the awarding of rolling stock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you can see on page seventy of your packet, um, we have an action form requesting to purchase ten squad cars that are in the budget. Budgeted for this amount was two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Follow the state contract bid price with the options that we need for each squad car. We can purchase each car at twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-two, which would be a total of two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars, which is under the, uh, budgeted amount. We're requesting to allocate these dollars and spend these dollars to purchase ten Dodges. Um, our last purchase was for four Dodges. These vehicles will be identical to those except for one year newer. Uh, we're trying to move our fleet in that direction, this will allow us to.
Questions, Chief? You stated in the, in the, uh, setting of this bid, that there's an additional two hundred and forty-five dollars per car. Uh, spotlight and vinyl flooring, and you came out with twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars. But if you're going two hundred and forty-five dollars per car, that's another twenty-four hundred fifty dollars. How do you come up with the twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars?
Uh.
When your original bid was twenty-one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars?
I believe twenty-one five eighty-seven plus two forty-five is twenty-one eight thirty-two.
It says per car, you're buying ten cars.
Right.
And so if you're spending two hundred and forty-five dollars per car, then you're spending another two thousand four hundred fifty dollars.
What the, the bid price is, is twenty-one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Yes, sir.
If you add two hundred and forty-five to that one car price, that's twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-two. If you multiply that times ten cars, that's two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, no problem.
Because I don't want somebody coming back and, and what's happened before.
Yeah, no, I'm, I certainly, that's why I'm here to try to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
By, by the way.
Leave him safe, get the thousand dollars.
By the, by the way, chief, he was a science teacher, don't worry.
Yeah, sometimes, oh, it's stated there, it can be re-read a couple of ways.
Okay.
Not the first time that's, and, uh, you've come in a couple of times where I've had to filter through the way you presented. So if you would have just left the two forty-five out, just seeing the additional spotlight and flooring, and then the twenty-one thousand eight thirty-two would have clicked better, maybe. But, uh, it looks like the, you know, it's, it's hard to fit where the two thousand four fifty went. See what I'm talking about?
I can't, I'll, I'll try to reword it better next time.
Uh, was it just two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that we approved, or was it more than that?
Well, it's two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for the cars themselves, and then we have additional amounts for the outfitting of the cars.
This total contract goes up about three hundred thousand dollars over.
What, well, yes, but all that money won't go to I, Ilderton Dodge. Um, so the remainder of that money will be split up.
My point is, I bet, the bid price on the ten cars is this, but you've got additional money that we, that's going to have to outfit these cars for us more than just two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, how much?
Um, I believe it's about a. Um, I believe it's about a hundred and, hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, I think it was around three hundred and forty thousand.
Yes.
And that hundred and twenty thousand does while, while quite equipped the cars, is that correct?
Equips cars with radios, councils, and light bars. All the additional equipment that goes inside, flashlights.
I was wanting to make it clear that we, uh, uh, the cars, we're equipped with more than that much money. Equipment, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Mr. Chief?
Chief, how are the, do you like the Chargers better than the Chevys? Are they holding up? I think we had some discussion of the life expectancy of the cars during the budget. And I was just curious how the Dodge is working out with you guys.
We have three Dodges currently in the patrol division. One Dodge that we purchased is in the investigative division, so it's a plain marked car. So without looking at that one, the three that we have, we're very happy with. Uh, the maintenance is lower on them, uh, the gas mileage is about the same, and it's a harder-running car as well, it's a bigger car. And it's also a rear-wheel-drive vehicle, so we're hoping that we don't have the transmission problems that we had.
Uh, chief, I, I think I know the answer to this, but this was put out on bid for multiple dealers, is that correct? And this was the best, lowest bid, or?
This is the state contract bid. Um, got a little bit convoluted as we went through this process, but in the end, what we decided to do was do exactly what we did last time, which is went out and just use the state contract bid. Um, by code, we're not required to go out for additional bids for these vehicles if we go with the state contract price. Generally, it's the lowest price, or almost the lowest price. So we believe we're getting the best bang for the buck.
Is this the same price the state pays for their incomparably equipped cars?
It is.
So that, uh, satisfies our three bid requirement, is that correct?
Correct, sta-, uh, there's, there's a specific statute where, uh, provision that exempts, exempts you, exempts you from the formal bidding requirements if you follow the state contract.
Yeah, but we have a policy of getting three bids.
We, we do have an internal policy.
I think, but for state to get this bid here, I would assume they would have had multiple bids. Okay. That's it in a nutshell. Other questions? Yeah, I make a motion.
Oh, you don't, I made a motion.
Oh, okay, he made a motion.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Those are favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Chief, you got your call.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number two, recommendation on urban archery season. There, chief, care is on that.
Urban archery season is, uh, certainly a topic of conversation around town, as well as within the police department, I'm sure amongst many of you. Um, we were asked to come back here in February and discuss this issue a little bit. Um, while we do have an urban deer hunt that we could be participating in now in the far south area near the old water plant, we are not doing that, uh, primarily because we have decided that that is not the best use of police officer and taxpayer. Um, so what we're trying to do is look to the future. We have, uh, several options available to us in the future. Uh, we wanted to discuss those a little bit tonight. Um, Councilman Harris is involved with this. He and I had a meeting the other day and discussed it a little bit. Would you like to interject anything here, Councilman?
Oh, yeah. You know, this urban archery hunt, or this urban hunt in Smithfield is a hunt that's done on a small tract of property out on our homeland. And i- if you remember, Councilman, we had, uh, in years past, we did have some hunts down there that were somewhat successful. And we used, uh, city employees, more specifically policemen, to manage those hunts to secure the, the, uh, reduction of the deer population at, at an expense. And the, the urban archery, or the urban hunt, um, is something that is required by the state in a small area. It could be expanded, uh, Chief and I had had some conversation about the, uh, this, uh, hunt. And if we were going to continue with that hunt, we needed to have a, uh, an extension of the contract, so to speak, with the state. Uh, and we're still within that perimeter. I think it's by April first, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, you know, we, we, we've had a number of discussions through the years about the situation in Smithfield with the deer population. And, um, in talking to Chief Scott, uh, I, I recommend that we do something a little different. And my recommendation is that, um, my recommendation to Chief Scott was that we look at the feasibility of opening up the entire town of Smithfield to hunting. Now, what that would mean, after some consultation with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, uh, Chief Scott called our contact there and they applauded us for having this thought. And our thought, and we certainly don't have, have to act on this tonight, uh, our, our thoughts would be to open up deer hunting, not as an urban archery season after the hunting season, but open up the hunting season in Smithfield to archery, which would include archery and crossbow, uh, to coincide with the regular prescribed hunting season of North Carolina. The rules and regulations of the state of North Carolina would have to be adhered to. Uh, there would need to be, uh, some, in our opinion, there would need to be some type of restriction as how far you had to be from a ha- a, a building, not just a house. And that, uh, the state suggested that we have a requirement that you have to be on an elevated stand, eight feet or higher. Uh, we feel like that that would give the landowners of Smithfield an opportunity to hunt their property. That would give the landowners the opportunity to manage their property and hunting. We would not be involved in the process. It would be, I, I don't, I want to say on the shoulders of the landowners, but it would be the, it, it would be like any other hunting season anywhere else in North Carolina, with the restrictions of the distance from a, a building and the height. It would strictly be bow and arrow. And it would basically give the citizens an opportunity, not just to harvest deer on a very small tract of property, but to a- any, any suitable property in the city limits, it would give them the opportunity to harvest deer. So it would serve a better purpose to try to restrain the, the growth of the deer population. And that, that's basically, after talking to the chief, he called the, the gentleman with the Wildlife Commission, and, and that's basically what we're coming to you tonight is to suggest. I've talked with Chief Scott, he feels comfortable with it. Uh, obviously, it would not, it would be a very simple process for us. There would be no reason for us to have, uh, registrations or anything like that. We're basically saying, yes, you can open this up to hunting on your land, just like any other place in the state of North Carolina. Chief Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did check with them, and there are no county ordinances right now that would, uh, cause us not to be able to do this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, I don't know what, if there is an ordinance on the books here in the city of Smithfield that would need to be changed, but, uh, that is a recommendation we're making to the county. I mean, I'm sorry, to the council. Uh, again, I don't think it's something we have to act on tonight. But that season will come in sometime in September, whenever the bow season is on the regulation book. Whenever that comes in, that's when the season would come in. And it would be open typically till about January the first. That would be a great opportunity for citizens of Smithfield to harvest deer, to reduce the population, and do it in a manner which the state of North Carolina sees fit. Be a very simple process if we decided to do that.
We're deer hunter, I don't like that. I mean, I think it's probably the best that we could do.
Yeah, and I'm not asking y'all to make a motion tonight. I don't think we should make a motion tonight. I think we should let the paper grab this and write an article and see, see what we get. And it, and so happens, he's here tonight, so I'm sure he will do that for us. But it's something we do need to decide on now. Understand that the urban archery season, if we don't reapply to that by April the first, is gone. So that is something that we have done. Uh, I don't think it really served a very good purpose for the entire city of Smithfield. And I think this would give landowners and the hunters in this area an opportunity to, to help with that situation.
Agree with the, uh, the liabilities of what happened, that all upon the landowners, that's great.
We, we, we're not, we're not going to be involved. All we're doing is opening up the season like you would in a, in a council. We'll have, based on what I know, and involved, uh, we'll have no liability. We, we're not involved in it. All we're saying is, you can hunt, you gotta be, you know, if you did seventy-five yards from a building, that'd be a hundred and fifty feet, you gotta be eight foot up in a tree so that you shoot down, so the arrows don't fly all over truck lane or whatever. But, uh, it, it makes it very simple. And it makes it fair for all the landowners in Smithfield. And it makes it very simple to enforce, because all you're doing is going by the state regulations.
I like, I like that idea of hearing that. Only, the first concern I have that pops up just sitting here right now is some hunters are very unscrupulous. Where in hell they, you know, even trespassing in the councilman's hunt. May be a concern, or it may not.
It, it is just, uh, that, that's, that's, anything you do is not to be perfect, right? You know, if those people are breaking the law, as an example, if they're using a gun inside the city limits, they get caught, they're gonna get prosecuted. And if they're hunting illegally on somebody's land, just like if they're breaking into somebody's house and landowners get caught, and the police can go out there and prosecute them. So it, 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 it fits just like anything else you do in life. And I understand what you're saying, and yeah, there are people who don't do that. Just like there are people that are gonna shoot ducks in the city limit, or shoot ducks out of season, or whatever. But, uh, it, it makes it simple for us. It also stops the, the usage of city employees on, on city time, which given the situation we have financially speaking, I, I think, I just think it makes a lot of sense. And I'm just suggesting it for the council to, to take under advisement. And, and at some point, we would need to, to make a decision.
And, and I agree. I think it's a very good suggestion. I appreciate you worth it. I'll be the chief and so forth on this. Back in two thousand and five, I believe it was, when we first started discussing this, Mayor, we got a call from South Smithfield, how, how it got started. I contacted the Wildlife Commission and talked with at that time, Commissioner. That was one of his suggestions, um, at that time. Whatever reason, that was not the recommendation of town staff at that time. It was a recommendation to go with the way that we did. And, um, I think it's a good idea, at least, at least looking further into and exploring it further.
And it, and it doesn't mean that you can hunt anywhere you want to in Smithfield.
Right.
If you own private property, you gotta have permission. Or you got a home.
Written permission.
If you, if you don't believe, if you don't believe that folks are not abiding by the law right now, I can tell you, this past Saturday at six-thirty in the morning, they were hunting, and it was right down the road, right?
That's right.
Right by the river from my house within the city limits, I'm sure, so.
It also doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna be able to hunt on city property. We obviously don't want people just popping all over the water treatment plant and everywhere else. So there'll be some things that, you know, you'll have to have restrictions on where you can't hunt. But if you get permission, or if you own land and you wanna hunt, and you're so far away from a building and you're eight foot up a tree, that's what...
What I'm hearing, Councilman, is very, very possible good idea, let's make it into consideration. Not to lose the, win the opportunity to reapply for this. We said April, I think, coming up. We have to reapply for that, chief?
We do not have to reapply or do anything to follow Councilman Harris's recommendation, other than perhaps change a town ordinance. But if we want to extend the hunt an additional month from mid-January to mid-February, then we have to make some changes to the letter that we already have submitted to the, uh, North Carolina Wildlife Association or Commission and, um, have that in by the first.
Probably what you should do is put this back on the agenda, March meeting, just to be sure that you don't want to reapply. I agree with the suggestions that have been made, but have it back on the agenda, be sure you don't want to institute the deadline that's, you know, April first. There is no particular deadline, other than the time of...
I would agree.
Why don't we continue conversation that we've had amongst us and put it back on for March again?
Thank you, chief.
Uh, let's see here, Budget Amendment Number Six for forfeiture funds. Oh, we got another one? Chief handling that?
Chief can stay up and Justin can join in if...
Uh, we have a police auxiliary, I think.
Auxiliary?
Oh, I missed one, I apologize. Okay. Uh, Police Department Auxiliary concept, I'm sorry.
Um, little bit of history, and I'll make this very quick. Uh, auxiliary one time, this actually hangs in our lobby. Uh, picture of the auxiliary, or the, uh, additional volunteer staff that we had in the fleet up until sometime in the mid-two thousand, I'm not sure. I didn't want to make more wire. We are interested in possibly resurrecting, uh, police auxiliary would be a complete volunteer unit. Would allow us to have some volunteer assistance from the police department to assist us in such things as traffic control, um, like, uh, for example, the, uh, Christmas parade. We expend a considerable amount of overtime for the Christmas parade. We can get enough volunteers to assist us with that and help us with our budget. It would also free up officers, perhaps to not have to pull the bike paths often. You have volunteers who are willing to do that, as well as other parks, community places, projects, um, minor traffic accidents on private property, like, uh, even downtown parking. Um, they would not be armed with a firearm. Um, we are still investigating if we need to arm them and train them with any type of impact device, like an aspirin or a taser or something like that. Not really sure what we should do with that yet. And part of that's going to depend on whatever our insurance would be willing to cover. I do not have that answer listed right. Um, mainly, we have a, actually, Jonathan Solomon, who was here earlier, was our police officer of the year. His father has approached, very interested in assisting us in managing this program of volunteers' ability, helping us get it off the ground. He has done a great deal of research already. He has traveled to Raleigh and sat in with, uh, their staff there. They have a volunteer, um, auxiliary there that assists them in all the areas that I mentioned. They also put on a, an actual class there that they've invited us to attend. Have our volunteers attend their class as well to learn what they can and can't do under the state codes and how things work to help us out. We have a significant number of trained instructors in the Smithfield Police Department. Actually, Lieutenant Shepherd is one, um, who can assist us in training any auxiliary officers at no cost to the tax, other than officers' time. at no cost to the town, other than officers' time. I just see this as a, as a great possibility to further our community policing goals, enlist the community's assistance, helping with the police and create better buy-in from the community and the police department, and manage our resources. So, my intent tonight was to bring this to your attention. Um, if it pleases the council, have some additional discussion on it. And if it seems like something that, uh, the council would support, then I will go further with it, bring back more information, figure out actual costs, and how to pay for those things, insurance issues, roadblocks that we made, kind of.
Let me just say, for being in the police department back in the seventies, make myself a little bit, this was one of the biggest aspects that Smithfield had was the auxiliary in the police department. Uh, as an officer during that time, if we didn't have auxiliary police, it would be many nights we didn't have staff to work with in the streets. It made a big, it just, it fell apart for whatever reason, I'm not sure, after I left. But, um, it, it's, it's a great, it's a great opportunity, I think, for something we have. And as chief has illustrated already, put us in a position where it will reduce costs overall, schemes. It's, it's a great project, I would recommend the cloud.
I would encourage you.
It, it works in other jurisdictions, so I don't understand why it wouldn't work here.
It's a really good volunteer.
Well, and I, I'm, I'm sure we'd, I mean, judging from the photograph, we had some very dedicated people. But I think we can find some very dedicated people today as well. All we can do is try and see what we can come up. It'd be a work in progress. It may start off slow, rose and steep. I don't anticipate that would allow us to decrease our staff, but it very well may help us to not increase our staff in the future.
It's a great supplement in any given region. I think that we're safe, perceived well.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we're over to the forfeiture funds. Justin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On page, uh, seventy-six of, in the packets, we have budget amendment number seven. Uh, the police department is requesting the allocation of, uh, forty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars of asset forfeiture monies to spend on a variety of, of upgrades or supplements to their department. I think they are noted on pages seventy-seven through page eighty in your packet. And then on page eighty-one, you have the actual, uh, budget amendment on the spreadsheet. I would let the chief address any of those, uh, specific uses for these funds. I'm just here to say that the funds are here. They are held in fund balance. They are restricted for the purposes that are defined within the police department on page eighty. And I'll answer any questions you have related to those funds, but I will refer to the chief on the specific uses of those funds.
I have a motion.
Chief, one question. What is a class? I mean, it's either, it's maybe a little bit, what a class C uniform?
Class B.
Excuse me.
Um, no, we don't, we don't need that. No problem. Uh, when we looked at the possibility of going to a class B uniform, we created a prototype of the uniform and asked Lieutenant Shepherd to stop in tonight, who's wearing class B.
That is class B.
That is class B, right there. Um, a class A uniform is what I'm wearing. What we are looking to do, and this was presented to me by the staff at the police department, the lieutenants particularly, that they felt going to a class B uniform on the night shift between five-thirty at night and five-thirty in the morning would conducive to the work that they do. It's also considerably cheaper. This uniform that I'm wearing would be about twice the cost of that uniform. As we allocate new staff, you might have to buy as many of these, supplement them with half of their purchase. Also, as they tear, they get worn, whatever, we'll again be replacing them with those, which is half the cost. It's basically twenty-five percent of what a continued expense would be. Uh, laundry expenses is another issue. Now, all these uniforms are dry cleaned. These uniforms are machine washed. Officers wash themselves, I guess. Well, this is kind of important to the staff. They're excited about this possibility. So, it's a morale builder as well. Yes.
Motion in a second, those in favor, aye? Opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Uh, approval of the audit contract for FY ten and eleven?
Page eighty of your, uh, eighty-two, I'm sorry, of your council packet, you have, uh, the beginning of the audit contract. There's a, a cover letter on page eighty-three, and then the actual contract begins on page eighty-four, page eighty-six. This is the, uh, contract that is approved by the local government commission, uh, which is the only contract that we can enter into for, um, audit services. And I'm sure you all had time to read through it. The price is similar to what we received last year. I think there may be an increase of five hundred dollars for servicing. And I just submit this for your approval. Uh, they have already, um, contacted me. Would like to set up an interim date to come out, um, June the twentieth, to begin the audit. So, once this is approved, the next step would be to do that work. I'll enter any questions.
Any questions on this, uh, audit contract?
Second.
Motion in a second, those in favor, aye? Those opposed? Thank you, Justin. All right, approval of renewable energy generation of utilities, Mr. Earl?
Weeks ago, Mr. Greg Purdy proposed the possibility of installing a photovoltaic or solar generator up on this building next to former River Side Cafe. Appreciate Mr. Purdy, he's been waiting very patiently to our meeting. And Mr. Purdy, after I get finished, he had, he wanted to add. But, but he asked to be able to install a solar generator on this building. What, what the process would be, he would be actually selling it back to us. Even though our supplemental power contract with Progress Energy normally prohibits that, this, Progress has agreed to allow everyone in the power agency to be able to actually offer this program to, to our, our customers. City municipal's already have these, uh, in Washington has a global. Various, various, uh, systems do have them. The installation, uh, at its basic consists of a, a photovoltaic generator and two electric meters. One meter monitors the formal consumption of the customer. The other meter measures what goes back into our system from the generator. The meters are, are read each month. Power that the generator produces is credited back to the customer. And, uh, the rate is four point eight seven cents per kilowatt hour. Progress Energy limits the sizes of, of these generators. Twenty KW for a residential customer and a hundred KW for a non-residential customer. I don't anticipate having a lot of these, uh, I don't, but, you know, we could in the future, you know, green energy is a big thing in North Carolina. So, we could have other applications for these. The town council is requested to permit the installation of the photovoltaic generator on this electric distribution system to the extent that current and future power purchase contracts allow and approve the, uh, the energy rider, uh, R O one, establishing a credit for this generator. And I do mention the, uh, the, the contract. Our supplemental power contract is up in, uh, twenty nineteen. This, this is allowed solely at the discretion of Progress Energy. We're under contract to buy all supplemental power from them, and they could possibly change it. But that's, you know, that's the reason that our, these, uh, these are special. I don't anticipate that happening, but there is always the possibility. Mr. Purdy, if you have anything that you'd like to add?
There's, uh, I'm the only person in Smithfield or second person in Johnston County that's considering this. I do see a potential opportunity to, to attract more customers. Got this idea about a year ago. I was looking at other buildings in downtown Smithfield, and, uh, on top of a building down on Third Street, I looked around, and I saw all this unused top space up there. Two years ago, couldn't make any sense financially to look at solar power. The panels cost too much. The rate you sell the power at, um, it took ten, fifteen years to get your money back by putting panels in. Today, with the current incentives out there through the federal, state, uh, rebates and tax credits, it takes four or five years to get your money back, and then you're making power for free. And that's a benefit for the generator. Like, if I put those panels up there, uh, five years, maybe six years, if I add some extra things, I'll be making five cents per, per kilowatt hour. Not a huge amount, uh, maybe a hundred dollars, a hundred fifty dollars a month. But the other benefit is to the town, where you're buying power from me for, I think, talking four point nine cents, four point eight seven cents per kilowatt hour. You might be forced to pay, uh, eight cents, ten cents, twelve cents a kilowatt hour from the power company. In that case, both sides win. What I'm doing is hopefully start one building in Smithfield, small system, which trying to maximize the size at about ten kilowatts. It's a very difficult place to put panels on this roof, this small building that, that we have. All the other buildings, they can be installed a lot cheaper than I can. If I do something like this, I think there will be additional interest across Smithfield, at least see what we've done up there as one occasion. Maybe look at, uh, around two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, when the panels get even cheaper, like the protection debate. It'll be, it'll be more of a financial incentive for other folks who are building owners, not use their roofs anyway, make it another, uh, income stream for themselves and also for the, for the town as the power rates keep going up over the next five years, ten years, thirty or forty years, which is the life of a typical solar system.
Thank you, sir.
I, I'm curious, this, this solar system that he's talking about, it would not be hooked up to his building? It, it would be like a normal little generating plant?
Well, uh, actually, what it will, what it will do, uh, whenever the sun is out and he's generating, uh, electricity, it will go back into our system. There's a meter in it, measures what's coming back into our system. There are some safety features on there. Uh, it has a, uh, it has a, it keeps, uh, power for coming back on us when we don't want it to be. If, uh, we have an outage on our system, there's safety conditions there to keep that from coming back on our, our system. If it came out, that's called a outage. So, there's, uh, there's safety considerations, but, uh, I'm comfortable with it.
But it is, it, it, it is what I said. It's a separate little system. It doesn't run through his building and operate his electricity.
No, no, it doesn't. It, it, uh, just goes right out.
Any other questions? Mr. Purdy, first of all, I just want to say thank you for making an investment, purchasing the building downtown Smithfield. And again, for, uh, thinking outside the box in such a program and being willing to take that first step. Hopefully, it will be successful. I think it's, uh, sounds like a great plan. And then make excellent use and, uh, renewable energy.
I will make a motion that would get approved.
Motion in a second, those in favor, aye? Opposed? Thank you, good luck with that. Item seven, approval of the TIP agreement, supplemental agreement, phase one A and one B.
I'll, I'll summarize this quickly, and then we can answer questions. There are actually two items, uh, two agreements, both of which are related to the funding we are receiving in the form of grants related to the Smithfield Crossings Project. The first one, uh, is described in the first paragraph under the action for. And it's shown on, that agreement starts on page ninety-seven. The funds, these are funds coming directly from the NCDOT Small Urban Program, the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The, um, the uses of those funds are described specifically in the, uh, one of the recitals, uh, under the witnesses section on page ninety-seven. You can see, see the specifics if you like, where those monies would apply. And the second one, I'm gonna make one correction. The second one has to do with the Federal Highway Administration, uh, monies that we are receiving. You recall, uh, uh, through the efforts of many, including, uh, Woodward Stevens and others, Secretary Lahood has allocated to us directly from the federal government. It will flow through a special office in Raleigh, the NCDOT, that administers federal programs in the amount of nine hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred dollars. And the, uh, under page, that agreement starts on page one hundred. And under the scope of project section of that agreement, you can see where those funds would be used. So, simply, we, we, the, the first agreement was, is a slight revision from, uh, is, is a supplemental to the one that was originally approved some months ago, as the project has shifted a little bit. Not the concept, but some of the details. And then the second one, I believe, we, we have not had a specific agreement on the FHA monies that I've, oh, I could be wrong on that. And again, th- these are all grant funds. They are consistent with the, uh, the current direction of the Smithfield Crossings Project. The only, only change I see, and I just noticed frankly, is we met on page one hundred, the NCDOT modeled this after, uh, Wayne County, we're actually in Johnston County. We changed that. You'll see Wayne County under, it's a really bad chart, we're in Johnston County. Totally consistent with the direction of this project, and it continues to move forward. I'd ask that you authorize the mayor and the clerk as the statutory signatories of the agreements, execute the documents and file them back. Justin, Paul, can you add, is there anything?
Any question of the manager regarding this agreement? Do I have a motion? Second? All those in favor, aye? No. Opposed? Thank you very much. I'll be very brief on the mayor's reports. I do want to let you know, as we have already alluded to, uh, earlier, there will be a presentation in this, uh, octoium on Thursday morning at ten on the Crossings Project and the, uh, News Charter School from USDA. Please come if you can. I think it's a, um, big representation from Washington to be coming, so we'd like to have a great presentation here. Also, out of a request from a, a young student that is asking, uh, mayors in different communities, we have proclaimed, uh, February the fifteenth is Art Healthy Day. I have put together proclamation for that, and, um, you'll be seeing some of that probably in the news media. Uh, probably the most, uh, talked about item most recently in our community, as well as statewide and nationally probably, since it will be the biggest public utility, is the merger between Progress Energy and Duke Power. How that affects us dealing with electric cities. I've been to countless meetings, been countless hours, the manager has been to some, and working with this. And, um, we've been interviewed by this, this Triangle Journal, which was in the, uh, twenty-eighth edition, I believe, last week. It's a U.S. Power Agency Notification booklet, which is in Pennsylvania, and some other press releases about our desire. And some other press releases about our desire to be at the negotiating table with this merger as Electric Cities members. Um, or a North Carolina Eastern Power Agency member. Uh, I, I would like and, and ask, in the most recent, uh, Electric Cities meeting, the manager and myself and Mr. Earl went to, um, I expressed on behalf of Smithfield and my feelings that, and I want to get the council involved in this directly, that it would be beautiful for us to get out of the generating of power business and go into either possibly the distribution of power or either completely out of both to help with our, our customers in buying power directly from Duke Power and Progress Energy. Uh, some of the presentations that they gave to us at Electric Cities meeting, uh, spoke of how long and hard this project may come together, but they're still hoping that this merger will take place within the next twelve months, uh, to get it finalized. Uh, a lot of mayors spoke, a lot of different people spoke at this meeting, uh, about their desire to reduce costs obviously for our customer base. I see this as probably one of the largest opportunities we may have as a government body to Smithfield to get involved to help and negotiate, if not to completely get out of our debt, which is at the present time about fifty million dollars to behalf of Smithfield, to reduce power costs for our systems. Um, in doing that, we, um, myself, the mayor of Elizabeth City, and the mayor of Kinston formed a North Carolina Eastern Mayors Association. Current staffing, we have thirty-two members that are in that Eastern Mayors Association. All with varied ideas of what this means to their communities. We've all been very careful to speak only on behalf of our communities, not Eastern North Carolina. However, uh, most recently, conversations today, in fact, there's quite a number of these mayors that are wanting to put together a resolution uh, to be brought in unison to the power agencies, as well as Progress and Duke, uh, as well as Electric Cities on behalf of their citizens. Uh, my suggestion or request of this board is to, at some point, we see up underneath here some possible dates of budget retreats. I would like to spend about thirty minutes, whatever time it would take, to also come together a resolution on behalf of town Smithfield on what your feelings are, what this board position is. Uh, I really do see some opportunities for improvement, uh, I see some opportunities to handle it, first of all, regulatorily. Some positions that we may have to push politically. And, uh, I just think we're missing this opportunity to help our citizens, and I think we do have a great opportunity to be heard. I just want to let you know about that, I would think that we should need to get together on a special meeting, I don't think we can bring a resolution to the commission tonight. But I do think it's important that we can wait to get that put together. Thoughts on that, uh, on your behalfs, but, uh, there's a lot of buzz out there about, I think there's a lot of opportunity, I think we have to do something about this. I'm interested, I know some of each other have talked with me directly about it. Is, is that something we can do? Yes. Well, I will tell you that this, this is a, uh, this is a very, uh, very hard, uh, thing to figure out, but I do think there's something and try, I think we can make it.
Might have another opportunity out there, Mr. Purdy.
That's right, that's right, solar energy is looking better all along. Very quickly, uh, one other little thing, um, we'll be coming back out with a second edition of our State of the City address to address some of our successes this past year, as well as some of our challenges in this upcoming year. Um, I hope to have that out sometime in this month. And the manager's got some possible dates here, three budget workshops, uh, if, uh, you want to roll that into something.
I can do that now, we, we, uh, I mentioned earlier, uh, this budget coming up, as you know, is going to be extremely difficult. I think it would be helpful for the staff and the council and Justin to have some, some discussions, uh, prior to us doing our, our due diligence and, and our job to bring you a balanced budget. And, uh, I've thrown out, uh, four dates, that we, we, we need to have at least two meetings. And one might be with, uh, the department directors and another might be with just the, just the council and me. We can, we can work through that. Uh, and I've thrown out possible dates, I would have a, I would prefer to have them later in the month rather than earlier, just to give us time to gear up and bring you the things that I think you're, I mean, I, I know most of what you would be concerned about. But I just put those, those four dates out there, we stayed away from, stayed away from Wednesday nights, obviously because of church, church activities. Stayed away from Friday nights, stayed away from weekends, and stayed away from, uh, Mondays.
What, what were those dates you mean?
They are, they are Thursday, February twen- tenth, Tuesday, February, they're listed on the, uh, second page of your agenda.
What are they?
Uh, February tenth, February fifteenth, February seventeenth, February twenty-fourth. If I had to recommend two initial ones, my, my preference are, my preference just for preparation purposes would be the seventeenth and twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth is not, I won't say, I could do it either. That's something you want to get off, you want to decide that, so. Could be preparing, is there any choices we can make? Can we just get, send in our? Send in our question dates, see how that works.
Sure.
Absolutely, we, we'll, and you know, it may be impossible to find the perfect date for everybody, but we will.
Staff, go ahead and send those in as quickly as we can, then we can prepare for it.
This is just a pre-budget like workshop?
Yes.
We're not gonna have the books in there?
No, 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 thi- thi- this is just to talk about so- some of the big, the big, the, the bigger issues that we know are out there. And we, we won't have all the, it, it's unfortunate, we won't have, uh, we won't have all the information we would like to have, I mean, there are a number of things we'd like to know. I'd like to know them right now, but we don't know, but at least we need to have some discussion. So send in your preferences and we'll put something together, the staff will be there whenever, whatever days you decide.
Uh, Mr. Moore, if you will bring us up to date a little bit on the implementation laws that just been discussed.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, real, real fast and counsel, just, just to, uh, let you know, an update from the League of Municipalities, uh, there, there have been at least three, maybe more, uh, there's, uh, three at last camp, it may be different by now, but House Bill five, House Bill eight, now, House Bill nine, which are all very detrimental to a municipality's authority, uh, for annexation. And, uh, just wanted to bring that to your attention, uh, something that we need to follow very closely as a council. Uh, Mr. Mayor, one of those, uh, Mayor in Kinston, House Bill five, passed a, appealing, uh, Kinston's authority for annexation. Those have been introduced. Get his ideas on it, but, uh, you know, uh, obviously the notion of annexation is, is very controversial, but also the, the health and prosperity of our, of our cities and municipalities is, is something that, uh, that's just, something that we can't afford to lose, we can't afford, uh, the ability for us to, to grow in structured way, I understand, so, just, I just want to bring that to your attention, just so that you know about it, I think it's important, that, uh, very serious bills. And, uh, I think it's something that we need to follow closely, and I'll just ask Mr. Mayor, get Eric stay, try to stay as abreast of that as much as possible, and I will do so and try to pass on all any information I've received from the league. I'll do that as well.
Thanks, sir. Anything else for the, yeah? Motion.
Don't move.
Motion's going, close session. Favor, aye?
Aye.
Post. Thank you, Mr. Chair.